Mr. Martino, would you please perform a roll call?
Yes. Mrs. Bates?
Here.
Mr. Doughty? Mr. Kurtz? Mr. Martino here. Mr. Ocas O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Ms. Tredowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here. Okay, under announcements, we do have some agenda edits. Under motion J and K of the consent agenda, please add "subject to solicitor approval" behind each one of those. The other agenda edit is, please add under 11 C1B, a motion for Rose Von Giovanni, long-term substitute learning support teacher at the elementary center at $256.11 per day, beginning approximately January 4, 2016 through approximately June 9, 2016, replaces our hetero. That was the only agenda edit. Okay, the procedures for public participation are printed on the inside of your blue cover of your agenda. At the appropriate time for public comment, please come to the podium, state your name, sign in, state your name and your address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any presentations by the public for public, for their agendas? Seeing none, we'll move right to the recognition for the Daniel Boone High School hockey team.
No, just push the button. Wait till it goes red. Try it again. Just tap it again.
Let me just say...
You have to push it. There you go.
Okay, let me just say, in my travels around the district, I get to meet a lot of students. So when I was at the high school about a week ago, the high school team put together a group of students for me just to chat with. In that group was a student who's standing before you right here, who claimed that this district never, ever recognizes the hockey team. So I said, "Fine, let me call some people that I might know and get you recognized." So you are now being recognized. Go ahead, John.
Hello, my name is John Peterson. I play the Daniel Boone Ice Hockey Team. And this right here is my friend Cole Becker. He also plays the Ice Hockey Team. This is my friend Dave. He also plays the Daniel Boone Ice Hockey Team. This is my friend David. He also plays for the team. This is my friend Wyatt. He also plays for our team. This is my friend Taylor. He also plays for our hockey team. This is my friend Ryan. He also plays for our ice hockey team. This is my friend Riley. He also plays for the ice hockey team. This is my friend Cole. He also plays for the ice hockey team. Calm. This is my coach Thor. He also, he coaches our ice hockey team. This is our coach, Iaffrey. He also coaches our ice hockey team. This is our coach Jesse. He also coaches our ice hockey team. This is our new recruit, Anthony Gonzalez, is our new goalie. And he plays for our ice hockey team. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce my ice hockey team.
Come back, John, come back. We're not done yet.
Do you have some questions for us? So obviously, Daniel Boone doesn't have an ice rink, so where do you practice and where do you play your games? Tell us a little bit about your activity.
Um, we practice and play most of our games at the Body Zone, but we have had the opportunity to play some of our games at the Santate area.
How was your season last year?
Uh, our season last year was pretty great. We did win the championship last year.
How you doing this year?
Uh, we're doing all right. Making a pretty solid entrance into the year.
What's your record?
Our record is... We are 2-3-1 this year.
How late in the season?
We played 14 games.
14?
14 games.
Is it against the public?
Yes, it is.
Now, John, I'm sorry. John, tell them what year you are in school.
Uh, I'm a freshman.
So when he says, "We won the championship last year," this is what got my attention. He was in eighth grade last year, not on the team. But he did take credit for the championship win of last year.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
What other teams do you play that we would recognize around here that have a hockey team also?
Um, we play Exeter, Wilson, First Catholic. So a lot of teams from around the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right to item eight, the consent. Those of you, if you would like to stay and witness the meeting, you're certainly welcome. You will not hurt our feelings if you have something else to do right now and rather just slip out, we'll give you that opportunity.
It's like homework.
Yeah.
I'm probably believing. Okay, do I have a motion for consent items 8A and through 8S?
I'll make that motion.
Second? First by Ms. Tredowski, second by Mr. Rathke. Any other comment? Seeing none.
Let me, let me just add, Mr. Basil, as Secretary, read something that Dr. Seinkert had written for him about, "I'll do a unanimous roll call vote unless I hear otherwise," which is contradictory because it wasn't a roll call vote. So unless there's objection, I'm just going to say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, seven to nothing.
Mr. Wolf, I'm sorry, can I make one more quick comment? I understand under H2, A, professionals wanted to, was there a cost analysis done on the choice between staying with three part-time physical education teachers or two part-time, two full-time ones? I think Mr. Hurley was involved in that decision.
Again, there was a cost analysis done. Mr. Small did that for us, our business manager, ended up saving the district about $6,000. More importantly, if you were, if you were able to go full-time, and also what he did too is create, thanks to the scheduling work of Mrs. Teckner and Mr. Miller over there, it also created schedule such that they can help us with duties and other elements in the school. So it was really a win-win situation on the way around.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, next item, item nine, building and grounds.
Buildings and grounds has not met consent at last meeting, so I do not have anything to report, and it will be, I'll be open to the scheduled meeting if any wants to.
Thank you, Mr. Small.
Mr. Wolf, if I may, Mr. Harris, Mr. Small, and I met with Jim Thompson last week, and he's not quite completed his study, but he would like to start making public presentations in January. And I talked to Mr. Wolf about possibly letting him present to the board first. So what I'm thinking is, is a closed-door session prior to the committee of the whole meeting in January. That way he's not here late. But it was just under the premise that we should see what's going to be presented to the public before he presents it. So if you have no objection, I mean, if that's okay with Mr. Wolf, I'll call him and see if we can get him here.
By all means.
Okay, thank you.
Financial approvals. Do I have any motions for item 10?
Uh, I'll make the motion for 10A and B for the sale of the 1987 dump truck for the BM7.
It's your motion.
And the sale of 1987 dump truck.
Do I have a second? Second. First by Ms. Tredowski, second by Mr. Rathke. Are there, is there any board comment?
Can we please explain the process by which those sales were made, so that we can be assured that the board member involved did not receive any benefit of the public value of that exclusion of those persons?
They were closed bids, they were sealed bids, rather, and they were open. Mr. Miller, I don't know who witnessed the opening, but I know they were sealed until the closing date.
Yes, I was the witness and happened in Mr. Small's office.
They were advertised for sale on the website.
Just on the website?
With bids. Because the value of them, they were, there was really no value to them other than scrap, so they were, they were put on the website. I don't know if added to on the paper or not, but I know, I know I saw it on the website, and it's accepted closed bids until a certain date and time.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just add one more comment about the voting. I'm going to do the all-in-favor, every motion, unless, if anybody feels an item is controversial enough that you want a roll call vote, you're welcome to ask for it, and I'll do a roll call vote. Hearing, none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, seven to zero.
Number 11, personal approvals.
I'll make the motion for 11A, B, and C, as amended with 11C1B.
Dr. Second?
I seconded.
First by Ms. Tredowski, second by Mr. Martino.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, seven to zero.
Okay, moving to programs 12. Motion to accept the following donation in the amount of $350 to the High School Interact Club from Bruceboro American Legion Post 626 for senior citizen luncheon help on December 10th. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Rathke, second by Ms. Tredowski. Is there any board discussion?
Only, I'd like to also thank them for the donation.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero.
Number 13, policy. There was no policy meeting this month since the board reorganized. The new chairperson will determine the next policy meeting date, so it's to be determined. Any discussion? Number 14, hold the business.
I have two brief items if no one else does. Mr. Harris, I know it wasn't a full two weeks ago because of the organization meeting, but is there any update on a light for the flag?
Okay, in working with the facilities, we're looking at various options right now. We're getting the flag up and down, which was a major achievement for us, since this building is occupied with so few people. We have the, our tenants next door helping with that. Casey and I are looking at various ways to illuminate the flag pole. So it's something, also, we were also waiting for the facilities finding, what we were going to do with this facility, before we put a major investment into lights out front. However, as things progress, it looks like there'll be some lighting out there. Just not sure how, why, or the cost.
Thank you. And the other item, Mr. Wolf, this is, at the last meeting, we discussed the state budget, and this came out today, that if the budget were to pass as currently written, Daniel Boone School District would receive $8,388,337, which is an increase of $301,000 over last year, which sounds nice, except it's the second smallest increase in Brooks County. I don't know why. Their increase is as high as 10%, we're getting 3.7. I don't know how they work this out. We are getting a $125,000 increase in special aid, and the ready-to-learn block grant will be the same. But as far as basic education funding, we're getting an increase if this stands, but smaller than those of the other Brooks County schools.
Just the question is to understand the funding formula that they came up with that.
And now they're using a hybrid funding formula. It's a combination of what the legislature developed and Governor Wolf wanted, so it's hard to say.
What was that number again, please, Mr. Martino? The total, the total amount?
The total, the total we would get for basic education funding is $8,388,337, which is an increase of $301,760.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martino.
I have a question about the contract, the agreement.
Have you get there yet?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Under, under the date, we have an update on the coral reef.
Well, I saw on the agenda, there is stipend approved for, for the, I would assume...
Well, it said science, so I wasn't sure that was a standing club, where that was going to be the...
You're about to answer your own question. That is a, I was going to let you go a little bit further. Yes, the science club is a standing club. It did not have an advisor assigned to it, so under the project of the Coral Reef, it's going to be assigned, we found an advisor, based on contractual guidelines, that stipend rate was just approved this evening, so that person would oversee the Coral Reef project with Rosemont College.
So then, are we like, is it the approved project, or what other hurdles do we have here?
Well, the first was getting funding, which was already in the budget, less than what actually what we thought we were going to have to use. So next, that would be approval of the project. Now, that's something I'll work with Rob in bringing forward by the next board meeting, but it is a project, so does the board normally approve projects, science projects?
I think it does when there's a cost associated with it.
Okay. All right, so the next meeting will have the full breakdown of all the costs for this project, and any other projects.
So the advisors can advise the science club, not just the coral reef?
Yes. So any projects that fall under the science club will be under that advisor.
Then this person would be responsible for maintaining the coral reef over the summer.
At a total of $800,000 for the, for the full year, though?
That's the contracted rate.
Um, and I probably shouldn't do this, I don't have the top of my head, but is this the green team? Is that, is that a stipend for project, whatever? No?
The person who handled the green team was usually the science advisor. However, that person was not the science advisor this year, so it was an open position. So after we left lots of discussions, Mr. McKnight approached us and said, "By the way, we still have this opening. It makes sense to do it, it's a science project," so.
Okay. I just was wondering if there was any other one. So there is an advisor, a stipend to the advisory, the green team? That's just a wrong...
No, that's the green team, stands alone.
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on to new business, item 15. Do I have a motion to approve the agreements? And also, the XA for B, motion to approve the committee members as presented?
I'll make the motion for 15A and B.
Second. First by Ms. Tredowski, second by Mr. Rathke. Is there any board discussion? Because I do.
I did, well, I mean, for, I know, Mr. McNite, Alan, Scott here, I mean, the part A, I mean, we actually, this is actually, we had discussed it before. I mean, that contract was in our, was in our notes, which I did read, which, but I mean, they, this would be to them, so they might have some questions on that. Haven't discussed it in the second call.
But we would have to recess momentarily, discuss it. Do I understand that this is confidential?
Yeah, it's confidential.
So I'm, it's up to the two of you.
I find it weird, so.
It's not a problem, you need to recess for...
Did anybody have any...
...discussions?
No.
Okay, all right.
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's available for public consumption or not, I don't have to go, but the tuition fee that's referenced in the contract, is that set by the state? Talking about A, Martina?
That would likely depend on the school. I don't know, but it's usually, it's based on the school, not the, not the state.
Don't I have to say?
No, no.
It's definitely the school. The school determines what the cost is actually.
Thank you, Ms. Tredowski.
Do we have a number on what that is? I didn't see it in the contract, did I just overlook it? Was there a basic?
I don't know if it's kind of in there.
Sort of just at the mercy of whatever the school?
Yeah, they're there. They have to look and determine the fee by the services, like the required by the...
Okay, so there's like state guidelines, what they can get in charge of.
The institutional services, other than the tuition fee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would say to those that are listed as committee chairs, my expectation would be that Mrs. Kramer have your agendas by Thursday, so they could be posted Thursday night. That way we have, if you have a Monday, a Monday meeting, at least three days before whenever your committee meetings want to be, to have sufficient time for the public to see your agenda and actually decide if they want to come out to your meeting. All in agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Martino?
All those in favor of 15A and B, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to nothing. Mr. Wolf, if I may, to discuss the finance committee for a second. The legislature is saying they hope to have a budget passed by the end of this week, but we've seen the same promises, for lack of a better word, like several times in the past two months. If, for the members of the finance committee, if the budget is not passed this week, I think we need to have a meeting sometime before the end of December to discuss contingency plans in case there is no budget, because our money, if I remember, Mr. Small said lasted until February. January's three weeks away, so we need contingency plans just in case. The other thing, and I had discussed this briefly with Mr. Wolf, there's been no agreement on it, but Mr. Small had talked about, up north, they had used a citizens advisory committee. And what I had in mind, we've lost some board members, and one in particular who knows these numbers better than anybody here, with the possible exception of Mr. Small. I'd like to use past board members as a citizens advisory committee to the finance committee. They would have no voting rights, but they would have knowledge that they could help us with. So do we need a formal vote on that? What, how do you want to do that?
Well, since we don't have a policy that outlines their roles, how these members are selected, I would say they would, anyone would want to come to the finance meeting as a member of the public and provide their input, and certainly if there's experience out there that they would want to bring to the committee meetings, I have no objection to it, they're a member of the public. But then, if we're going to continue with that, there would be, you know, we'd have the right of policy around that, on how it would, how it would function, how long they would be appointed, if they're appointed, how those, how they would be selected.
We can have some discussion on that and policy, and see if there's desirable committee members.
Yeah, and on top of that, I didn't realize Mr. Subers wasn't going to be here tonight, but I had already discussed this with Mr. Subers, and he's familiar with it being done, and he had no objection from a legal standpoint with it, so.
Mrs. Kramer, can you see if ESBA has something on that subject? That may give Mrs. Bates a head start.
That'd be great, and we'll start the discussion, see if there's desire for that.
So under new business, then, I think I mentioned to yourself, Mr. Harris, about the PSBA training. So I don't know if you want to discuss that at night for our new board members. PSBA training is coming up in January, which I would think we guys would want to be a part of, and typically, the board would approve that there's a cost to that, because we're not, we're not that elite, we're not at that elite level, right?
I sent them the information on the PSBA board training.
But there is a cost to that, right?
Correct.
So I think typically, we would approve that.
Usually, we have to prove the cost.
Yeah, it's, it's in the policy.
Nobody made sure. Were you interested at this time?
What's the deadline for signing up?
They were going to pick whatever one they wanted to attend, and there are multiple sites.
Because I looked at, they're pretty spread out throughout the state. The closest one, I think, was Allentown.
Yeah, so when they got back to me, that's when I was going to...
Let me just say, Mr. Scott and Mr. Ocas O'Neil, it would be good if you went together, so you hear the same thing at the same time. We had like six of us the year we got on the board, and even hearing the same thing at the same time, we still came away with some different views.
I mean, I have to look at the dates, but my recollection was the one that was upcoming was fairly far away.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to the two of you. It would be good if you, if you went together, and when they say there's a cost, the cost is to the district, not to...
Not to you.
Not to you.
The other item I had, the job, unfortunately, Mr. Kurtz is not here, but the course election guide for the high school was emailed out. I know Mr. Kurtz wanted to have that discussion, that curriculum instruction first, to kind of go over that, and then come back to the full core, but I think we're already kind of behind our timeline here, so.
And Mr. McKnight isn't here to speak for himself.
I sent them the information on the PSBA board training.
But there is a cost to that, right?
Correct.
So I think typically we would approve that.
Usually we have to prove the cost.
Yeah, it's, it's in the policy.
Nobody. Were you interested at this time?
What's the deadline for signing up?
They were going to pick whatever one they wanted to attend, and there are multiple sites.
Because I looked at, they're pretty spread out throughout the state. The closest one, I think, was Allentown.
Yeah, so when they got back to me, that's when I was going to.
Let me just say, Mr. Scott and Mr. O'Kiss O'Neill, it would be good if you went together. So you hear the same thing at the same time. We had like six of us the year we got on the board, and even hearing the same thing at the same time, we still came away with some different views.
Yeah, I mean, I often look at the dates, but my recollection was the one that was upcoming was fairly far away.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to the two of you, but it would be good if you, if you went together. And when they say there's a cost, the cost is to the district, not to.
Not to you.
Not to you.
The other item I had, the job, unfortunately, Mr. Kurtz is not here, but the course selection guide for high school was emailed out. I know Mr. Kurtz wanted to have that discussion, and curriculum instruction first, to kind of go over that, and then come back to the full core, but I think we're already kind of behind our timeline here, so.
And Mr. McKnight isn't here to speak for himself, Mrs. Weber, I don't know. What is the, what's the deadline, what's our target for when we, we should go through that?
I think earlier in January, we can have the final day, because this is food. I'm not sure how many more questions the board may have in regards to some of the pieces. As having shared, it was in draft format, there are minor changes, but the overall concept, I think, is what we're looking for as far as school board approval. There is very minor changes that I'm aware of, that are looking at, but if the curriculum instruction committee meeting could be scheduled early July, so.
January.
Thank you, January. We could be effectively having our teachers do the teacher chart recommendations by the end of January. The sooner we can get it, the sooner we can get the student to do the course selection. The sooner we can look at our numbers, our staff, and all of these schedules, really master. So if we can have an answer by mid-July, or.
It's not going to be January?
Definitely January, but not summer, you have it in January, mid-January.
Now, this introduces that panic waste, huh, is that right?
A lot of people had a chance to look at it or not, but.
And that's essentially what it is, it's formalizing the pathways program that these previous leaders have. It's taking the current curriculum and course offerings, and we have renaming the courses, basically taking the courses we have and pushing them into the different areas that the students are already interested in, and kind of formalizing those spaces. There are courses that, as discussed previously, going on even an odd year rotation, as well as courses that are being replaced by supplemental course or new courses being offered, but those at this point are limited.
Mrs. Weber, just think back to last year. The hangup was that we were told there'd be no cost to what we were offering. High school principles changed, and then there was a cost. So, please convey to Mr. McKnight to, for this January meeting, to have the full cost available for us, please. Thank you.
We already have our presentation before the next committee to hold for Mr. Thompson. So that could have to be a date before that, that Mr. Kurtz could try to arrange a curriculum instruction meeting. If any board members attend, you could have it, certainly have it as an item to vote on for committee to hold.
Well, I'll press face with Mr. Kurtz then, to see if he can get a date that's good for committee, and drag it down.
He commented that he was going to forego the meeting in December. Just, do you know why? Just because it's too close to the holiday, or?
He'll be home on the 20th.
He had a conversation with Mr. Harris.
I could.
I don't see why we can't get one in.
What Mr. Kurtz wanted to do was to send out the information that you received, for you all to review it, and if you had any questions, go back to him with those questions, so that he could not have that next meeting. So for the next board meeting, we could vote on the curriculum, get it passed. That was what he told me a couple of.
I really would like a full, robust discussion on it with the administration, though. It's too big of a step, just email.
That's up to you all.
Well, certainly if he can arrange it for this month now, if the committees are established, sooner the better.
Will you follow up with him, Mr. Rappke?
Yes.
Please.
I will, too.
And are there any other questions for me to take back from Mr. McKnight's current needs of the board, so that we can be prepared to get the information ready for you guys prior to that meeting?
I will email you my questions.
Please remember, all committees have to be advertising the paper, and due to the holiday, that Reading Eagle does have cutoff dates. So when you are trying to schedule a meeting, I need, I need ample time to advertise.
She needs advanced notice to advertise my.
I know, please use your microphones. Please use your microphones.
Well, my battery doesn't work, so I can't get my microphone, thank you, ma'am.
Is it in?
Share.
I don't think it's, it's. I don't think it's recharged. Is it charged?
Yes.
Nor do I have a backup battery, usually I have a backup battery, too.
We try, Mrs. Reno, we try.
One, can I ask you a question under new business also?
Also, also.
Can I ask a question under new business also? As far as the passing of the Every Student Succeeds Act, this past week, that replaced the Elementary Secondary Education Act, which is the rollout version of Net Child Left Behind. Will the district be doing a district-wide study now to see how that will impact us? If we can lessen some of the rigorous testing schedules? You know, what the full impact of that, because that's a huge, sweeping new piece of legislation. That should help us a little, ease some pressures on our children and our staff.
Well, what the legislation does is it removes the AYP, the annual yearly progress step. So that's part of the No Child Left Behind, where the federal government mandated through Common Core various steps. So that means if you're in Wheeling, West Virginia, you should be the same as it if you're in Cleveland, Ohio. What it, what the new law does is allow states to manage it on their own. So states, and it brings it back to the local home rule.
Still need direction from the state?
Yes, so we'll still have measures to hit and things, things like that. Now it's under state guideline. So, some things will change, some things will stay the same.
Just to clarify, so we'll still be taking key tests, we'll still be taking the PSSAs, it's just that it won't be used in the AYP. The results will not be used in the AYP, they're still mandatory, and the key test cannot be.
What it's doing is it's taking into the whole school, the district into account. It's not comparing, say, Philadelphia to us anymore. It's taking, it's looking at the whole school, okay? Not just a few tests, it's looking at the whole picture of everything.
Including the test, though, we'll still be testing.
Test, yes, we'll always be testing, we will always be testing. But they're looking at more things that are, that are involved. So all that isn't laid out yet, but it's looking at the whole. So for example, if a student's going to college, it looks at their GPA, their extracurriculars, their volunteer work, it's taking a look at everything now.
To go to AYP.
Well, no more AYP.
What's that?
No more AYP.
No more AYP.
Right. This is taking the place of that, right.
So how would you expect the process going forward? Are you going to be getting directives from the Department of Education directly to your administration?
I would assume it goes back to the state level, and they'll put some, and they'll put some mandates out. Don't know yet, I mean, it just happened.
Please leave us informed as to your experience with changes happening.
Is there any other discussion? Are there any presentations by the public?
There is, there is, I do have one thing I would like to say, and maybe this is what you're going to say?
Probably.
Does it have to do with $30,000?
Yes.
Then I will shut up.
My name is Michelle Miller, at 600 Bridge Drive, in Laurel Green, 367 Muckhead. And we're here on behalf of Sports Boosters to let the board know that way last week, we received word that we did receive a $30,000 grant from Pakistan Health and Wellness to redo what is known as the Football Weight Room, which will no longer be called the Football Weight Room. So we're.
It will be called Universal.
Well, the brand detailed that we're hoping to make it more of a both extracurricular and curricular type room for all students. So we're hoping to have it involved in instructional physical education, as well as after-school physical education.
And replacing a lot of the really worn, entire looking equipment that's in that room. So we will be meeting with Casey at some time in the near future, along with Mr. McKnight, to get everything rolling.
So how did that feel about, that you all break the grant?
Yes.
Did you? Thank you very much for doing that.
Very well done.
Very, thank you.
Did you write my grant to Amy?
I don't have a grant yet, sorry. How come, I do want to talk about $30,000? But my question is, Mr. Wolf, I forget when, I did go back and search through all the minutes after school today, but a while back, a vote was made by the task board to eliminate the online district newsletter that we had, and replace it with a paper newsletter. At the time, attachments were not being available, so the cost of that newsletter was not made public. Sent it to a write-to-know request, and was shocked at the cost of $9,130.50 for just one issue. When you voted on this, it was to be sent out, I believe, three times per year, which also totals nearly $30,000. I know other districts, this has been justified, that other districts use paper newsletters to inform people who necessarily don't have children in the school district. And I understand all that rationale, but you see what $30,000 can do for a school district, and I question the use of funds in this way. So my question is, are we under contract with the Communications Solutions Group so that we're, we have to play out the rest of the year and spend that money? Or is that something that can be halted?
It's a good question, I don't know the answer to that, as far as our contractual obligation with respect to, is that for a year with how many publications? I don't recall the details. Yeah, I, I would have to go back and look, I thought it was for them one time, but we'll certainly look to see if there were multiple scenarios. But if it was an independent contract, there's usually a lot of flexibility built in to severing relationship, but we'd have to confirm, but I recall it just being for that one time.
So would severing that relationship be something that the board would consider?
We could certainly consider it. I mean, I, speaking for myself, I have got a lot of positive feedback from members of the public that, you know, they're not, you can see here where we have roughly seven to eight people in the audience, you know, one member of the press. So the word doesn't get out very often, and like I always tell people, you know, what, we come, try to come to the meetings, believe 100% of what you witness, 90% of what's written in the paper, and 10% of what you read online. And unfortunately, you know, the social media side.
Gets to people in reverse.
Yeah, it tends to get people all blathered up for, in some cases, totally frivolous, un, wild, unbelievable stories. The numbers are too long.
I don't disagree in any way, I don't disagree.
So what I'm saying is, I think it was very, from my perspective, I think that publication, now the timing, everyone can talk about the timing, that's, alright, that was supposed to come out much earlier, but the reaction, at least that I got, was entirely positive.
See, now, we talked to different people, because the reaction I got was vastly different. But that's.
What did you hear?
I heard, well, I heard that a lot of people said, "I want to write to the recycle bin", so that's a lot of money going into recycle bin. I heard a lot of people commenting on the nature of at least that first issue being very self-serving to the board, but that's not what I want to discuss, because that's past due law, and there's nothing positive to bring up there. My point is, there's no downside to communicating by the board with the public at all. But when we're trying to decide between $30,000 and what we can spend on children, and we're giving up other things, I'm just wondering if that's a good use of funds when we're so limited.
We could always consider changing direction at that time.
I would even urge that conversation, please.
I have to add to that, I thought that we were told the first one would be more expensive than subsequent ones, and I don't know, does that sound familiar? I thought we heard something like $4,000 range for subsequent ones, or the one, because my research required on that, and is that true, and, and, and speaking of school there?
Speaking of something else.
I can assure you that's something else, or. Well, the postage alone was over $3,000, that won't change.
Right, right.
The, the way it was laid out, that the first $3,000 was for the interview process and the layout, I guess you wouldn't have to lay it out every time, but they would always have to, they're not members of the school district, so there would always be an interview process for them to write the articles. Whereas this happened before with an online publication that was headed up by two teacher, one teacher and one, I don't know who the other guy was, but it went online and students wrote the articles. And I'm not sure why that couldn't be done the way we did it, where there could be articles written by the board, articles written by students, be made available online, and allow members of the community to opt into a mailed version if they prefer. I would think that in here, there might be a solution where we could save some money, because I think we can all agree, we need to save money, so we can spend it on education.
Yeah, I'd be interested in, I could do a post-grad application on that newsletter also.
They think more, they think they began it, went off.
Thank you, Mr..
I was just going to ask, $30,000 aside, if the publication was done by students, you could justify spending some of that money on the publication, right? Like if it was a.
Educational.
Format, such as a club, or, you know, we do a core.
I like ice hockey teams.
I mean, I'm just saying, the publication itself, like, I, to me, I think that's crazy, spend $30,000 to send out a newsletter, one of the online tools to do it, but to me, it would make sense if we were going to use some of the funds, not all of it, but some of it, to make it a student run and make it educational, I think that would.
We're all curriculum, why don't we bring it up for discussion in curriculum? See if you can't be tied up in any way, at least complement, supplemented with the student articles.
There was a.
There was a cost to that as well.
There was a reason, Mr. Scott.
A large cost to that act, I mean, there was a substantial cost to that. It wasn't $9,000, but it was a $2,000.
It was two $2,000 expenses, that's a big difference, for, for the entire year, as opposed to $9,000 three times a year.
There was also a printing cost, because.
There wasn't printed, it was only online.
There were some that were printed for people that wanted mail. And it was, I believe, $1,500 for the printing. So, part of our analysis was, was getting it out to everyone. And maybe there's an option of, instead of opting in, if a lot of people didn't get it, that you can opt out if you don't want to buy mail. Because we did, I mean, we did hear feedback from people that they liked the publication. They thought it was, it was good communication. So, I'm open, I mean, I don't want to spend $9,000 three times a year, I would agree with that. But, but I don't necessarily think we're just going to throw it, I think we need to look at it and figure out.
I think there's a compromise here.
There was a setup cost, there was, the postage can be reduced. But back to what you were saying, Mr. Scott, this is not intended to be a student newsletter. It's intended to be a board newsletter. And, and the feedback that I got, and I think it's the same thing Mr. Wolf got, was from people who said they heard a lot of information that they normally don't hear. And, and that was the intent of the newsletter, was for the board to inform the public, who, as you see, does not come to these meetings.
But there's no reason why it can't be inclusive of the student, you know, student input. I mean, but that would be something you would have to discuss in the grade.
You could assign the students something to research and write on.
He's just.
I think the thing is, you could be happy to build somewhere, right, where you can, you know, maintain the integrity of the intent of the newsletter, cut, reduce the cost, reach the same public that you're trying to reach today, and involve the students and/or faculty to make it educational and make it some beneficial to the students and a learning experience.
That's okay. Do you think discussion belongs in curriculum on that board? Or, because we can do that, I don't know where else it would belong.
Well.
You know, somebody has to pilot the discussion.
As far as the, the student involvement, of course, it would start in curriculum instruction, but as far, it's, like Mr. Martino said, this is, this is a board publication. We agreed this is what we wanted from it, the items that would be inclusive in it. There'd be no reason, at least for me, my opinion is that certainly that we could make the, a student corner, a student page, highlights, you know, as we had tonight with, like, a group of the ice hockey team. I don't think a lot of people in the district probably know that we had one. So, certainly could change, or it could be eliminated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
I have one other item with that. Shouldn't that, or couldn't that contract have been posted on there? Why, why?
I don't know.
Why don't we post it? Why did you have to get an RTK?
It actually entered into a long-term contract.
Well, Mrs. X, she got something through the RTK, so there's something publicly available.
Right, the cost, we asked for the cost.
Yes, that was invoices.
Oh, so she's got it listed, she can save a contract.
Yeah, there is a contract, unfortunately, you know, Mr. Miller isn't prepared to speak of Mr.
No, my question is legal, why aren't we posting those contracts?
Yeah, I mean, most, most, well, there's probably hundreds upon hundreds of contracts.
Why would the, so?
Well, I.
Why, it's not like justice.
And I think that was the attitude, and that's what write-to-know is for, because something like that, which is certainly available to any member of the public, will request it, and within five days they'll get the information, if it, if it's something that is responsive by the write-to-know, but I don't know of a single public entity, district, municipality, that would list their contracts for myriad reasons. For instance, the district has contracts with regard to student services, so that could have FERPA issues along with it, HIPAA-related issue, but.
But that's qualified as a private issue, like.
Well, this would not, but this would be, again, one of hundreds of contracts that would be districts involved in. And I think just from managing it on a website, that could be an issue. So I think that's why the write-to-know avenue is how we generally.
Good evening, Sherri Rogers, Clarego Drive, Douglasville. It's on. Sherri Rogers, Clarego Drive, Douglasville. First thing I want to say is thank you for the layout in the parking lot. I really don't like leaving here in the, it's been very, very dark out here, so thank you for that. I came here tonight to address the lack of a substitute pool here in the school. I believe it's causing disruption to the academics at the elementary level. Several times just today, seeing the past two weeks, the reading and math specialists were pulled from their normal duties to substitute in the classroom. Aides that have their guest teach or their teaching certifications have been pulled from their duties. And in the worst-case scenario, elementary classrooms have to be split up and children sent to different classrooms so that they can maintain the academic day. And there's also a rumor that several principals have to cover for some teachers. This is a huge problem academically because the disruption affects the entire school day. The disruption affects many more students than just one class. Reading classes, math classes, and grade level classes that have to absorb five to eight students. The substitute service that we contracted several years ago was supposed to alleviate the necessity of building secretaries frantically looking for substitutes every morning. The minimal increase in our subpay was supposed to alleviate the shortage of qualified individuals to teach our elementary children. The substitute shortage seen over the last several weeks leads me to believe that the solutions that have been put in place have not been resolved. The winter months are plagued with colds and flu, and everyone in the school district gets sick. There's no way to avoid it, and we need to quickly find a solution to this gross loss of academic time in our school.
Thank you. I can tell you, it has been a subject of conversation since Friday when I was met by a member of the public who's son had several study halls in the high school. And to say the least, she was not happy, and I totally agree with her, that's unacceptable. However, when you look at, and I haven't heard confirmation of the number, but what was reported to me, and this is again third-hand, was 11 teachers from the high school in one day. Now, if you have a role of 70-some teachers, 11 in one building, there's a different problem. But, I mean, Mr. Harris and I had a conversation about that, I'll let you speak to what your idea was on it.
Well, first, when Mr. Wolf asked me, he said he met a woman who talked about high school, I thought it was my wife, because I had the same conversation with my wife that night, because my son's a freshman here, and she was complaining that he had too many study halls in one day because of no teachers. Subs don't grow on trees, this is a national problem. The role of substitutes in schools are going away. Back when we were all in school, there were a group of people, mainly, you know, young women, who you could call at 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM, and they would be at the school, or you had that study stream of subs. That's going away. There are companies now that specialize in finding substitute teachers who can't find people. If you look at the news, Philadelphia is going through a mess right now, where they're not filling at all. To have 11 teachers or five, six, 10 teachers out is unacceptable. We're looking at various solutions. I threw some things out earlier today, and I was told some things are possible, some things are not. So hopefully, with some creativity and some careful financial maneuverings, we could have things in place. But subs, as we know it, are probably a thing of the past, they really are. You just can't call someone about 5:00 AM and they'll be, I'll be there in two hours and be there and be able to teach the class. So we can have people sitting in a room, monitoring, but there's no real instructional work going on unless a teacher leaves something on the file when he or she is out. So we need to find a way to keep academic work going, even though the primary instructor is not there that day. So it's being looked at, it's being worked on. However, it's tough, because we need to get away from that calling someone to come in to take over a class. That just doesn't work.
If we had actually addressed, we'll try to address this about a year or two ago, by increasing the reimbursement rate for the substitute teachers to make us more competitive with the surrounding districts. You know, perhaps that's something we need to look at again, I don't know, could be part of that discussion. But, you know.
Excuse me, before you do, Mrs. Rogers, could Mrs. Kramer have a copy of what you read to the board, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please, please.
I'd have to go back and look to see how many years ago it was, but there was a time, probably four or five years ago, maybe administrators, remember, were we at five? Each building used to have at least one or two preferred subs that were always on call, which helped to alleviate that scramble. Now, I know that's a huge expense. And I know that when we raised our sub rates, area school districts also raised. And I think right now we're still tied for the lowest rate, what is it now, $100, is it a day for subs?
95.
What, 95?
We were pretty much middle back. We had a whole comparison of all this reality.
I think maybe at the time, but subsequently they've now gone up in the surroundings. I could be wrong, I haven't recently researched it.
But still not that great. Frankly, it isn't.
Right, right.
You know, so even the best rate.
But you need to do a tax cut if you're there all day and you make $80, it's a tough kick.
And I know our found of knowledge is, you know, is a long one for, but I do recall when Commissioner Basil was here, he did say there was, you're correct, four or five years ago, where somebody who sat, and they might not even have work to do, they just sat there.
No, they always had work to do, they were supposed to do one-on-one with students or students.
But even if we did have it preferred, if there's seven people out, that would help.
The other thing I wanted to address was, I don't know of a time when a teacher has ever been out, that plans have not been left. I mean, that's a, that's a requirement by the school district, there are always. Either your regular plans or modified subplans, if you know you're going to be out. There's never a time when a teacher would be out without leaving, without leaving any kind of subplans.
So even if they're sick, you're saying no plans have already been filed?
Oh, of course, they're online, they have to be.
Curious, is one of your ideas to have some kind of technology help us out here?
Odyssey?
Not robot teachers or anything like that, no.
I didn't know if there was a way to type into it online, kids could do it, some kind of.
That may be an option in some classes, but we're looking at staffing.
And yes, there's subs that were cut in 2010, I was on the road with them.
Is there any other public presentation? Okay, before we adjourn, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy, safe, and prosperous new year. We will not be meeting again until next year, so I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.